Good evening, my name is Kristin Lopez and I'm the Port Jervis City School District Board Clerk. And I hereby call the reorganizational meeting of July 5th, 2023 to order. Please stand for the pledge. Dr. Bell, would you please lead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its
We ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence for retired high school English teacher and department chair Christine Nefredo who passed away recently. Thank you. Okay, I will now administer the oath of office to newly elected and reelected members of the Board of Education. I'll read the Board of Education member oath of office to everyone at once, pausing so that each person can insert their name in the proper spot. And then we'll continue repeating the oath after me. Please make sure to verify and sign the oath document that you're given and return it back to me at the end of the meeting. Anybody have any questions? Okay, at this time, please stand Judy Amato, Nancy Dunn, William Onafree, and Michael Witt. Okay. I.
I.
Judy, please start.
Judith Amato.
Nancy.
Nancy Dunn.
William Onafree.
Michael Witt.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board of Education member.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board of Education member.
According to the best of my abilities. Thank you, congratulations, everyone. Okay, we will now hold elections for this year's president and vice president. So I need to have a motion and a second to open the nominations for school board president.
Move it.
Jason.
Second.
Nancy. Okay, so please raise your hand if you would like to make a motion for the nomination of a candidate for school board president. Please state your name and your nomination. Bill Harris?
William Harris, I'll elect to nominate Mr. William Onafree for president.
Can I have a second, please?
Second, Matt.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any other nominations?
Uh, for president.
For president. Okay, at this time, could I have a motion and a second then to close the nominations for school board president? Kara, who seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion and a second to approve the appointment of William Onafree as school board president? Nancy, and Jason. All right, and as the same, may I have a motion and a second to open the nominations for school board vice president?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Uh, raise your hand if you'd like to make a motion and state your name and your nomination.
Uh, Jason Kamar, I nominate Kara Rapp for vice president.
Second? Michael? Any other nominations? Okay. Then may I have a motion and a second to close the nominations for school board vice president?
I'll move it.
Second.
All right, and may I have a motion and a second to approve the election of Kara Rapp as school board vice president?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Motion carries. So I would need Mr. Onafree to stand up. And repeat after me, please. I, state your name.
I, William Onafree.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of president of Board of Education.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of president of Board of Education.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Mr. President, have a seat. Kara Rapp? I.
I, Kara Rapp.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of vice president of Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of vice president of the Board of Education.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Okay.
All right, now I administer the oath to Kristin as our board clerk. Kristin? I.
I, Kristin Lopez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of clerk of the board.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of clerk of the board.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. And now it's my pleasure to term the meeting over to you, sir.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, letter H, the approval of the board meeting agenda for the reorganizational meeting and the regular business meeting. May I have a motion on that, please? Mike?
Michael?
And a second, please? Jason? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the resignation of board member Michael Hockenberry. May I have a motion on that, please? Moved by Bill Harris. Second by Michael Witt. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is the appointment, uh, of board member Flo Santini to replace Michael Hockenberry from July 5th, 2023 to May 21st, 2024. May I have a motion?
I have to talk to that one.
Okay, Judy, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Flo, would you rise for the oath for Kristin, please?
Let me take the way. You ready? I, Florence Santini, do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the State of New York and the Constitution of the United States. And I will faithfully discharge my duties as Port Jervis School Board Members according to the best of my ability. Amen.
Wonderful, congratulations. You are so good. Please have a seat.
Have a seat.
I'm going out that door.
No, no. Nope, gotta sit up by the table.
What did Flo, she made it even?
Well, you know.
All right, next are, uh, is the reorganizational consent agenda items. These items include designation of official newspapers, radio stations, and television stations. Item B is statutory public official bonds. Item C, the designation of depository. Item D, designation of establishing petty cash funds. Item E, transfer authority for the superintendent. F is a mileage reimbursement for the 2324 school year. Item G, annual appointments for the 2324 school year. Item H is the adoption of the 2324 Code of Conduct. Item I, the adoption of policy manual for the 2324 school year. Item J, the adoption of the policy investment numbers 5220, 5410, and 5411 for the 2324 school year. Item K, building principal and acting principal resolution for the 2324 school year. Item L, the principal and acting principal resolution for special education students being educated out of district for the 2324 school year. Item N, special education committee members for the 2324 school year. Item N is the appointing board president and vice president as designated or alternate to appoint special education and martial hearing officers for the 2324 school year. Item O, special education and martial hearing officers for the 2324 school year. May I have a motion to bring that to the floor?
I'll move it, I'll second.
Second by Flo. Any questions, comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item A, assign a board member as delegate to the Orange County School Boards Association for the 2324 school year. And may I have a motion to bring that to the floor? I'm sorry. And Phil? Okay. All right, and, uh, Mr. Harris, would you?
The board will allow me to be happy.
We would love you to continue to do that. Thank you, and you do a great job, and thank you so much for doing it. So, Phil Harris? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Assign a board member as delegate to the New York State School Boards Association for the 2324 school year. May I have a motion to bring that to the floor? And Michael Witt has offered to be our delegate. And, uh, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for doing that, Michael.
Thank you.
Item C is the appointment of the board as a whole for the Board Audit and Visitation Committee. May I have a motion on that, please?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B is the CSE vendor list for the 2324 school year. May I have a motion on that, please?
I'll move it.
By Kara, second by Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, section 504, committing members for the 2324 school year. May I have a motion to bring that to the floor? By Michael. Second by Flo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, and that includes, can I have a motion to adjourn the reorganizational meeting? Michael? And that's at?
Second.
7:14, and just thank you, Jason. Second by. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll now go into our regular business meeting at, uh, 7:14. Okay, and our first order of business is the, uh, presentation of the Port Jervis School District Comprehensive Improvement Plan. Natasha?
I'm just gonna recap. There was a team that worked on our district comprehensive improvement plan, which is also known as DECEP, and our school comprehensive education plan, which is also known as SEP. So I'll use those two acronyms. All right, start. Good evening, I'm Dr. Walkwoods, and I'm just gonna review our district comprehensive improvement plan, DECEP, and school comprehensive education plan, SEP, for the 2324 school year. Um, there should be a plan copied within your board packet, um, to be have reviewed, um, for tonight's vote, um, on our DECEP plan. Uh, we would have to do a plan, uh, because we were identified as a school leader of improvement. Uh, we had committee members. For the DECEP team, which are listed here, I'll go through each name, but it also includes, um, one of the members is our SEP team. Um, and our SEP team, which is our middle school, which was identified, um, through test scores and performance. So this is our SEP team, they're made up of parents, uh, we have board members on the team. Uh, Mr. Harris, thank you so much for volunteering for this team. We also have our consultant, Sandra Madison, who, uh, helped us with the design and making sure that we're compliant. So, um, you'll see the little asterisks, those are our team leads for the two teams. So, in brief, I know the, the plans are extensive, um, that you wrote through, but I just wanna summarize it briefly. So there are commitments that the SEP team had to commit to. Um, commitment one is essentially improving student outcomes through rigorous and consistent instructional programs. Um, their goal was to look at IXL data, um, honor roll alignment with, um, the expectations of outcomes for test scores, and, um, common assessment data. So common assessments was something new that we started last year, building into our curriculum, curriculum maps, which we started the year prior. Um, and that would align us, um, through each content area, so for example, A grade, English would all have similar or the same, um, uh, common assessments, so we could engage teaching and learning, um, in each classroom. And the outcomes, um, that we're hoping to see by the end of the school year next year are the common academic practices consistent with in each academic, um, range, the established teacher teams, so that we can build our curriculum maps and be in alignment, um, curriculum-wise and common assessment-wise. Um, the same grading practices with, within each content area, and increase our academic rigor for all, um, core classes. Our commitment to, um, providing a safe environment for students, families, and staff, um, having clear, by having clear expectations and consequences. This is part of our MTSS, which we talked about, our PBIS structure, so this is folded into our commitments. Um, and you'll see all of our goals and so forth academically are aligned within our MTSS, um, work that we've done the last two years. So part of the goals are to, to decrease discipline referrals, increase students in tier one, which is our core tier that happens in all classrooms, so taking them from tier two and three back to tier one. And also introducing and having our parents use Power School, that's where the communication went for our parents. And our outcome is to build safe school culture, and this is really, um, the feedback that we wanna get from our student surveys and our parent surveys and our staff surveys that we send out twice a year. Um, having common language for behavior expectations, so when you walk into a building, you'll see what PBIS stands for, um, and then have the expectations, whether it be on the bus, posted, and where kids understand it, in the cafeteria always in classrooms. And increase communication to our families and the use of Core Pride 5. And we did present on that in our PBIS, that that was the adopted, um, saying for our PBIS program is Core Pride 5. Uh, the DECEP team, which is the district team, um, looked at the, the work that our SEP team did for the middle school to make it district-wide. So although our middle school is identified, uh, we wanna make sure that it's a K-12 program or pre-K-12 program. So we put three priorities. As you see, SEP is commitments, uh, DECEP is priorities, so priority one is also deepening the connections, um, within the building between parents, students, and families in the community, um, and that's also our PBIS social motion learning, which is a K-12 program. Priority two is strengthening our ability to provide relevant piece of curriculum. And that's some of the work that we're gonna be working on this year is having a course catalog for our middle and high school, because we are adding, um, college course offerings of variety for all students to have access to, um, continuing with our curriculum maps and, um, increasing our positive responses on our surveys, um, to our parents, students, and families and staff, um, for curriculum instruction and building our common assessments. So you'll see that overlap, not just the middle school, but the K-12. And our priority three, um, is to build and implement a K-12 multi-tiered system and support, our MTSS program. Um, we're gonna evaluate each year, um, to keep building on that for academic behavior and attendance needs of students, um, exiting our tier two and three to tier one district-wide, um, using our data dashboard to get real-life data, um, on a daily basis to make student assessment, and continuing building our MTSS program, um, with positive responses by, you know, the students and teachers. Are there any questions? That's, those 20,000 pages you had to read, that's final. Any questions? All right, and I just wanna thank Bill, um, it was great to have the board member, uh, district team, and so thanks for all your volunteer. It was, like, three hours you haven't been into talking about curriculum, so, thank you. And to our rest of our team, to our middle school and district teams.
Thank you, Natasha. Okay. Next is gonna be our administrative reports, uh, superintendent, Dr. John Bell.
All right, thank you, just have a few things. First of all, uh, thanks to everybody who helped make graduation success. When I came in the cafeteria on that Friday morning, all the kids said to me is, do whatever it takes to be outside, please, please, please. We wanna be outside and not have to be limited with tickets. So, uh, we were hoping the rain would hold off a few more minutes, because we got, those are the part where we got through the whole ceremony. Boy, 10 minutes after, rain buckets. It was unbelievable, so we wish we could've gotten more pictures and got people out there, but we are glad we were able to have an outside ceremony. Uh, last Friday, we had the closing on the purchase of the 150 Pike Street Building, so we are now the landlords, not the tenants. So we'll see if that's good or bad, no, I'm sure it's gonna be fine. We already said he's the landlord, we put him in charge of it. Uh, but it is another, a good milestone for us, you know, as we try to upgrade all our facilities. Uh, number three, the next thing we're working on is the land swap with the closing, even though there's no money involved, they're actually using real estate closing uh, to actually swap the Solomon Avenue properties and the Statewide Loa property, so that's the next thing that comes down the pike. July 1st was the beginning for Wee Transportation taking over for Polity, and tomorrow is, we ran some buses today, but won't run, uh, even more buses tomorrow when we go full-fledged summer school tomorrow. And then, uh, Capital Project Phase Two, which is work that'll be done here on the 209 campus, uh, will be done next summer. Uh, and we're getting ready, we're gonna be putting that out to bid early in the fall, so we can be the first ones bidding. Instead of the last ones, we've tried to do work this summer, instead of being the last ones, we'll be the first ones bidding for the work on the fields and the, uh, middle school music rooms, preschool science rooms, all that work for Phase Two, so we'll be bidding that in the fall. And then, also around October 1st, is our plan to have all the drawings for Phase Three up to State End by October 1st, so that we can get approval for Phase Three somewhere around February, with the idea that we might actually start work, if the weather cooperates, we would start work on turf and planet field in March. And, uh, so that, which would be very aggressive, most schools cannot do turf fields in the spring, because they might have track there, they may have lacrosse there, but because we don't use planet for anything in the spring, they were so excited to find out they could actually start a project in March and not be in the way of anyone. So, uh, we're excited about that, too, that would be a real kickoff to Phase Three, and then everything else would happen. So again, next summer, we will be finishing Phase One at the middle school, doing Phase Two and doing Phase Three all at the same time, with the idea that all will be ready by September of next year, so it's gonna be a crazy summer next year. JT and I are not taking vacations next summer to see them. Because it's gonna be a doozy, it really will be a doozy, so.
You get to call my wife.
That's right. And that's everything I have for the update for tonight.
All right, thank you, Dr. Bell. Next is, uh, Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, Dr. Natasha Walkman.
Logan, I just wanna, um, say, repeat, um, summer school started today for our extended school year program, um, and tomorrow for our summer school, so we're super excited. Uh, I just wanna thank our teachers, facilities, technology, uh, our support staff, and food services for preparing for the big day tomorrow. And also for administration, for organizing, they did a lot of the work already to get ready for, um, today and tomorrow. And a special shout-out to Lynette from Transportation, because she is holding the work together to make sure her kids get here. So just a big shout-out to her as well. And that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Natasha. Next, Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mr. John Kepp.
Thank you, so the new budget started, uh, July 1st for the 2324 school year. Just, I wanna talk a little bit about fund balance. For us, with a $90 million budget, you can only really carry 4% of your budget. That's how you calculate what your total fund balance should be, so our fund balance should be 3.6 million approximately. We were at 14,500, but, uh, Dr. Bell's Phase Three, along with the purchase of Pike, brought us down to that 3.6 million dollar number. The reason I'm bringing it up with the same conversation as the budget is last year's budget is gonna settle, I don't have that number. But we will increase our fund balance, but by the next meeting, we will have a plan on how we're gonna allocate that and get that money back down to 3.6 million. I do not wanna give a number, because money's, the number's flying around a little bit right now, and I do wanna have an exact number, but whatever that number is, we will allocate that by the next meeting and show you how we're gonna spend that down to get closer to the 3.6 million. I just wanna make you aware, uh, there's a software that we're using in the payroll department called Timepiece, and slowly implementing throughout the district, uh, all buildings and grounds right now, IT and our clerical are up and running and using this. What happens is the employees have special badges that they swipe in and out of work from. So this helps on the payroll side of the backend of things, it helps Nancy in the payroll department, uh, automatically calculate the hours, and also increases accountability with the employees. Um, you can't have anybody punch out, I'm not saying anybody does that, but you can't have anybody punch out for you or punch in for you. You need to swipe in, which keeps, keeps the accountability there, but, uh, but the main feature of this is really that on the backend, it helps payroll. That, that is called Timepiece, if you hear is that, that's what's happening in the district, so, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, John. Next, your consent agenda items. Item A is the minutes of the Board of Education regular meeting of June 13th, 2023. Item B is the minutes of the Board of Education special meeting on June 28th, 2023. Item C is the minutes, CSE minutes, annual reviews for 2324, requested reviews for the 2223 year. Item D is minutes, CPSE meeting minutes, annual reviews for 2023, 2024, and initial eligibility for 2023. Item E is the treasurer's financial reports for May 23. Item F is, uh, disposal request for textbooks, ASK Elementary School. Item G is disposal request for books from the HBE Elementary School. And H is scholarship, the Port Pride Scholarship. May I have a motion to bring that to the floor, please? Moved by Flo, second by Judy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11 is personnel employment agenda items. These items include, A, a leave of absence, B, retirement support staff position 454 administrative. B, retirement support staff position 454, administrative aide. Item C is a resignation instructional staff, position 339, special education teacher. Item D is resignation to accept a new and district position, position 453, clerk typist. Item E is a resignation stipend position, school tax collector. Item F, employment contract extension, John J. Bell, superintendent of school. Item G is the appointment support staff, vacancy 2531, temporary summer school, food service helpers. Item H is an appointment, vacancy 2535, coaching appointments for the 23-24 school year, excuse me. Item I is appointment, administrative staff, vacancy 2544, position 546, provisional director of information and technology. Item J is instructional staff, vacancy 2548, position 3918, probationary school psychologist. Item K is appointment, instructional staff, vacancy 2551, position 172, probationary art teacher. Item L is an appointment, support staff, vacancy 2553, position 3917, provisional clerk typist. Item N is appointment, professional non-teaching staff, vacancy 2554, position 3916, provisional athletic trainer. Item N is appointment, support staff, vacancy 2557, position 453, and probationary administrative aide. Item O, appointment, support staff, teacher aide substitutes. Item P, appointment, support staff, LMS electrician substitute. Item Q is stipends for the 23-24 school year. And item R is amendment to board docs, personnel, personnel agenda items from June 13, 2023. May I have a motion to bring that to the floor? Michael?
Second.
Second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to take a minute and our retiree is Lynn Hendershot. Lynn, you have done an amazing job. You will be sorely missed. You did a fantastic job, and good luck to you wherever you go, and a lot of happiness in your future. John?
I also just wanted to introduce our new Director of Information Technology, Mike Olbrich, in front of our, Mike Walkman. All right, nice to have you back. I'm sure Joe filled your ear for the last hour. Your head's probably spinning when you're talking, but welcome back. And I also just wanted to say publicly to the board, thank you for giving me another year of my contract. I really appreciate it. I'll do my best to try to still be here that long, okay?
Yeah, just try to keep this here. I know it's tough. That's all right.
Here you go, for the board.
All right, revised 23-24 Board of Education special, or Education meeting schedule. Now, there were some changes. From reorg meeting from July 6th to July 5th. And location change for December 12th meeting to ASK cafeteria due to a winter concert. And the removal of the March 26th meeting because it fell into spring recess. All right? May I have a motion to bring that to the floor? Move by Bill Harris. Second. Michael? Any questions, any more questions, comments on that? No? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, action item, increase or decrease employee benefits liability reserve fund. May I have a motion on that, please? Okay. By Dan Dunn, second by Jason. Any questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C is to increase the workers' compensation reserve. May I have motion to bring that to the floor? By Michael. Second, please.
Second.
Kara? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item D is the Capital Project allowances and change orders. May I have a motion to bring that to the floor? Move by Kara. Second? Harris, any questions, comments? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item B is the Omni Servants Agreement for the 23-24 school year. May I have a motion to bring that to the floor, please? Move by Flo. Second?
I just want to say, this is the third-party administrator that we're required by law to have for our 403B accounts. About 10, maybe about 10 years ago, they required us to hire a third-party.
Thank you, John. All in favor? Opposed? Michael Witt.
Thank you.
All in favor, opposed? Motion carries. Item F is the agreement between the Portervis City School District and Al Taurus Consulting Group. May I have a motion on that, please? Move by Jason.
I'll second.
Second by Nan.
And this is school security. I've earned the right, hired this year, I did that huge report and all the things we're working on for the future.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item G is the legal services engagement letter for Ingraham &amp; Smith, LLP, for the 23-24 school year. May I have a motion on that? Excuse me? Thank you, Mike. Second, see. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item H is the grant, connect the kids grant to the Portervis High School in the amount of $3,330.40. May I have a motion? Move by Bill Harris, second? Flo? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item I is the health and wellness contract with Fallsburg Central School District. May I have a motion on that? Move by Flo.
I'll second.
Second by Kara. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item J is a donation to the Portervis City School District's School Lunch Fund in the amount of $50 from Colleen Brock. May I have a motion on that? Move by Flo. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Flo made a motion, I think we were getting money, not spending money.
I know, I did. Item K is creation of individual building lunch pins for the high school, ASK, and HBE. May I have a motion on that?
I'll move it.
Move by Kara. Second? Michael Witt. John, you want to just let them know what that is, please?
So as it's listed, we get donations from the community, just like the one from Colleen Brock and other outside people that want to give to lunches, the lunch funds. And actually, what happens is any lunch fund that is left when students leave, it has to sit such a period of time, I think it's one year, and then it can be put into this fund. We want to be able to give pin numbers to each school so that if there was a student in need of a second lunch, now we do provide lunch at no cost, but if sometimes students need a second lunch, and principals will, at their discretion, have the ability to put a punch in a pin and be able to buy them additional food. So that's what's going to happen.
Thank you, John. Thank you for explaining that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item L is the District Comprehensive Improvement Plan and School Comprehensive Education Plan. May I have a motion on that? Move by Michael, second? Bill Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item M is the nomination of John T. Redmond of the Florida Union School District Board of Education as Area Nine Director of the New York State School Boards Association. May I have a motion on that? Move by Bell, second? Michael? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And item N is the resolution for the purchase of 146-150 Pike Street. May I have a motion on that? Michael? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And basically, this is the last step. You first opposed a public referendum throughout to the voters to buy it. Then you accepted the votes the day after the election when it was ratified. And then this is the final piece to the puzzle. It's all the legal hoops you have to go through.
Item 13, the board member items. I'm just going to read the different committees and who's on each committee. For the 23-24 Buildings and Grounds Committee is myself, Bill Anafree, Flo Santini, and Michael Witt. ELT Committee Delegate, Bill Harris. Here Park Liaison, Flo Santini. Portervis Liaison, Annie Foster. Education Committee is Jason Kamart, Kara Rapp, and Michael Witt. Health Wellness Committee, Nancy Dunn, Jason Kamart, and Flo Santini. Policy is Nancy Dunn and Annie Foster. And the Safety Committee is Nancy Dunn, Jason Kamart, and Flo Santini. Thanks, everybody, for volunteering for those committees. Appreciate it. All right, next, our board member comments. Start with you, Judy.
No, board members are just done.
Okay, Nan?
Just done, thank you to the voters for bearing me back. And I appreciate it, and do my best.
Okay, Jason?
I am good, thank you.
Okay, Annie?
Well, our Coosin' Night in Portervis will be July 11th from Front Street from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And our 172nd Fireworks Parade is this Saturday, July 8th at 2:00. And I just found out the National Night, National Night Out Against Crime is Tuesday, August 1st, and 12:00. In your car. All is good. For that.
Okay. Michael, anything?
Just congratulations to everybody elected and reelected, and I'm glad to see the district win.
Very good. Mr. Harris?
I'm back.
Hello?
Okay. I don't know, can you hear me? Can you hear me now? I don't know. I'm sorry I missed graduation. I think, I think everybody knows I was in Italy for 16 days. I'm sorry. And I did come home the day before, but I don't know what happened. Like 3 o'clock, I was fine all day. 3 o'clock something just hit me like a brick of walls. And I'm so sorry that I missed it. I've never missed graduation when I was on board. And I feel really bad.
Too much gelato?
It's cappuccino. Omicasta. And I need to thank the board with all my heart because I appreciated the text and the messages and the phone calls from people after the election. And Mike called me and said some pretty nice things to me, which I know a lot of people felt also. And he asked me if I would do this. And I'm like, no, I'm done, I'm done. But Bill asked me also, and for the board to approve. You didn't have to approve. You didn't have to. I mean, I mean, it could have been anybody. And, but I think everybody here knows how I feel about school board. You know, we ain't going to. And I think, I'm okay, I'm not going to say no more. Thank you very much. I will get in trouble.
Kara?
I will get in trouble.
Great, I wanted to welcome back the reelected school board members. We're so happy to have you back. And I also wanted to wish the best of luck to Lynn Hendershot, who I worked with for many years, and I highly respect. And best of luck to you in your next chapter. And welcome back, Mike Olbrich.
Very good. Okay. There's no page three members, so next is, our next regular Board of Education meeting will be Tuesday, August 8th at 7:00 p.m. in the high school cafeteria. And with that, I'll.
Can I? We have it up on July? No. Okay, that's not my fault then. Because I'm going to be in Italy for a wedding. And then there was another one that I talked about last year.
Just, there's just two, there's two in August. So beginning of July, beginning of August. We threw an extra one, no, we threw an extra one in late in August.
Sorry, I'm tired. I'll be back to that, but I leaked a second.
Your bag's real heavy.
Don't do a lot.
Okay, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will.
Flo? Second? Bill Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.